And members of the public. Before we commence the meeting, I'd like to draw your attention to the fire regulations, which are on the screen behind me. And also, please, can you ensure that your mobile phones are switched off or to silent? Councillors, can I please remind you to speak directly into the microphone and make sure that your card is pushed firmly into the console? Members of the public, I would like to say that as a committee, we do understand that the matters under consideration tonight can be emotive. However, please be respectful of those around you in the public gallery and the committee, and refrain from any form of disturbance, clapping or booing, or any other form of disturbance. So now we move to the main items of business. Minutes of the meeting which took place on the 7th of October 2015 have been laid on the table for the last thirty minutes. Are you content that I sign these as a correct record of that meeting?
Agreed.
Thank you. Have there been any apologies for absence, Fiona?
None received, Chairman.
Have members declared any interest before the evening?
Yes, I've had a declaration from councillor Mike Band in respect of application A1, the Dunsfold Park application. He's declared a non pecuniary interest because he serves with Jim McAllister on the Surrey Hills Trust Fund, and also in his capacity as mayor, he was guest at the 2015 Wings and Wheels event.
Thank you. Have there been any questions received from members of the public?
None, Chairman.
And are there any updates to government guidance or legislation that the committee should be aware of, Elizabeth?
Thank you, Chairman. There is a key update for members this evening. Since your last meeting, the government has published the Housing and Planning Bill, which members may be aware of, which will now work its way through Parliament. And the key measures for development control are firstly, the introduction of a new form of permission in principle for small-scale housing developments on brownfield land. And it will apply on a site that is allocated for housing in a development plan or a neighbourhood plan, and thereafter, only technical details consent will be needed, a bit like reserve matters at present. To inform this, local planning authorities will have to keep a register of brownfield land available for housing, and this will be land available suitable for at least five dwellings with no clear constraints on development. Secondly, the new bill requires local planning authorities to promote the supply of starter homes for first-time buyers, and for residential development to contain a specified proportion of starter homes. And starter homes are to become a part of the definition of affordable housing, as we understand it. And thirdly, there will be a requirement for local planning authorities to make provision for serviced plots for self-build or custom-build in new residential developments. Finally, the poorly performing authorities' special measures regime is to be extended now to include non-major development, and members will be aware up to now, it is only focused on major developments. The government's going to extend it to include assessment of performance on non-major development. Separately, the government has announced that it will make the current permitted development rights for changes from office to residential permanent from May 2016. So that ability to change was going to cease next May, but they've indicated now there'll be a change to the general permitted development order to allow that change to continue. In addition, similar rights are going to be introduced from light industrial and lawn drets to housing. Lawn drets is a rather strange one, but that's what they're saying they're going to do. And all these will be subject to prior approval procedures as the current B1A to C3. So that's a brief update. We will keep members informed of the progress of the Housing Planning Bill as it moves through Parliament. Hope that's helpful, and happy to take any questions. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Are there any questions in relation to that? Councillor Byam?
Thank you, Chairman. Just interested in the affordable housing. You didn't say, but I thought I'd heard, that we could no longer specify affordable housing for rent. It had to be for shared ownership. Am I correct, or am I being totally misled by the telegraph and other?
I think, thank you, Chairman, I think that there are changes going on in any event due to the changing in funding arrangements to registered providers, which are having the effect of meaning that the proportion of social rent versus shared ownership is having to change from seventy-thirty, as we've always required, to more like fifty-fifty. And you'll see that change working its way through recommendations on housing schemes coming forward, because that seems to be the outcome of these changes, and its meaning for viability of housing schemes. The new starter home initiative is that, in addition to the existing definitions of affordable housing, the government are introducing starter homes whereby to provide the acceptable proportion of affordable housing, applicants will be able to provide starter homes to meet that requirement. So there's two changes going on at the same time, I think. Do you agree with that, Matthew?
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you for that. And councillor Ellis?
Thank you, Chairman. Not a question as such, other than, I'm sorry, I didn't manage to write it all down. Is there any chance we have a quick email update, bullet points only? Thank you very much.
Certainly, Chairman, we can do that.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Any more questions on that subject? So then we move on to item six. And can I ask Victoria to introduce the quarterly enforcement?
Thank you, thank you, Chairman. We've just got one verbal update, councillors, on the site-specific enforcement cases for the eastern area. Land to north-east of Norley Farm, on page seven. Just to inform you that we have received confirmation that the owners are in fact residing elsewhere, and that we will be meeting the owner next week, he's currently abroad. And that's just the one update I've got on Norley Farm. With regards to the statistics, if I could just draw your attention, you may have noticed on the top of page ten, with regards to the local performance indicator, there has been a drop in the last quarter to seventy-five per cent, although the LPI has still been met at seventy-five per cent. The reason for this is that there has been a diversion of resources from enforcement to the area planning teams. This was a temporary measure and has now come to an end. I'd also like to draw your attention to the caseload, the current caseload, the caseload recorded for the quarter, on page nine. You'll note that there has actually been a, overall, it has decreased significantly to now two hundred and six, recorded in the last quarter, and this is being the lowest cases on hand we have recorded. Thank you very much, and I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Victoria. Do we have any questions? Councillor Ellis?
Sorry, Chairman, yet again, not a question, but with regard to the land north-east of Norley Farm, could I please make it absolutely clear that this is nothing to do actually with Norley Farm? I know that the residents are very concerned that it may be identified with this breach, but the residents, the owners of Norley Farm, do not have ownership of the woodland and are not connected with the breach, as I understand it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. I can note the file, councillor, and I will, I'll make a note on the file with regards to the concern, and I can see whether I can change the title. Thank you.
No more questions? Then we move on to item seven, and can I ask Catherine to introduce the quarterly appeals report, please?
Thank you, Chairman. Starting on page thirteen of your agenda, members will note there are a total of four appeals received in the last period, all of which were delegated decisions. Of the four appeals received, two were dismissed, one was part dismissed and part approved, and one was allowed. The first two appeals on pages thirteen to fifteen relate to Tanyard Farm in Shamley Green. Members may recall this site has a long and complex planning and enforcement history. Appeal A related to a section 191 lawful development certificate, which sought to confirm the following four developments as lawful: the front boundary wall, an annex building on the site, the reinstatement of the front gardenland as residential curtilage, and the erection of a summer house. The application originally also referred to the reinstatement of paddock curtilage as existing, however, the inspector commented that this description was open to broad interpretation, and the appellant requested that this be omitted from the appeal considerations. The inspector concluded that in respect of the front boundary wall, it had been reduced in line with the requirements of a 2005 enforcement notice and is now lawful. In addition, he concluded that the reinstatement of the front gardenland as curtilage, following removal of a former carport, is now lawful, although the same could not be said for the operational development in the form of a paved surface on that same area. The inspector also reasoned that the summer house on site is now lawful by the passage of time, given that it fell outside the land referred to in an enforcement notice issued in 2001. The appeal therefore succeeded on those three grounds. However, the inspector was not satisfied with regards to the whole of the annex building on the site. He was not satisfied that was lawful at the time of the application, and that only the stub walls that delineate part of the wall enclosure of the outbuilding were lawful at that time, as these were considered to be de minimis. The appeal therefore failed in this respect, and the certificate was part refused on that basis. The second appeal, also related to Tanyard Farm, related to the change of use of paddock land to residential curtilage. The inspector concluded that whilst this material change of use would be inappropriate development in the green belt, its scope to harm the landscape beyond that which it is already caused by decking and a marquee in that area would be very limited, and would outweigh any harm to the green belt. He therefore concluded that very special circumstances existed which outweighed that harm. Moving on, the third appeal related to the construction of an extended driveway and relocated curtilage at Northbrook in Littleford Lane, Shamley Green. The change of use of the land constituted inappropriate development. The inspector considered that as a result of the introduction of substantial built development, the proposal would also harm the openness of the green belt. The inspector found no very special circumstances to outweigh the harm, and the appeal was dismissed. The final appeal for the quarter related to the erection of a replacement dwelling at Blackmore Lodge in Green Lane, Shamley Green. Again, a site within the green belt wherein replacement buildings need not be inappropriate provided they are not materially larger. In this case, the replacement building would have been approximately forty-three per cent larger than the existing building, having a deeper footprint and greater bulk amassing. The appellant argued that there is an extent permission for extensions to the existing dwelling which allow a forty-one per cent extension. However, the inspector was clear that the two schemes were very different, and that the forty-three per cent increase proposed would have the effect of a creeping increase above and beyond that which would normally be acceptable under the rural extensions policy, and indeed, above and beyond that which had been previously approved. The inspector therefore dismissed the appeal. That concludes this quarter's appeal report, and I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Catherine. Are there any questions? So we are therefore asked to note the performance on planning enforcement, the previous item on the agenda, and also that the committee notes the recent appeals decisions. Are we agreed on? Thank you. And so now we move, oh, sorry, in the event of site inspections being necessary, as a result of consideration of the applications at this meeting, these will be held on Monday the 30th of November 2015, at a time to be agreed. So moving on to the planning application, eight point two, item A1, WA20150695, Dunsfold Park, Stovall's Hill, Cranley. Peter, would you like to introduce the application to the committee, please?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, the application seeks permission for the erection of six new buildings at Dunsfold Park to provide nine thousand nine hundred and sixty-six square metres of B1B, B1C, B2 and B8 industrial uses. I'll just run through what those uses refer to. B1, apologies. The B1B and B1C relate to research and development and light industrial uses. B2 relates to general industry, and B8 relates to storage and distribution. Shall just run through some of the context of the site. So on screen, we have the location plan. Edged in red is the application site, which sits at the top, also the northern part of the wider Dunsfold airfield site, which is edged in blue. The entire site is not quite shown on this, but it gives you the full context. See in the centre of the site, the existing runway and perimeter tracks. To the north of that sits the existing hangar buildings, commercial buildings, state offices, the Jigsaw School. To, at this point here, this is the Stovall's Hill gate, and down to the south-eastern corner, adjacent to the nursery, is the Compass Bridge gate. We also have a solar farm in up this edge of the site, on the north-west corner. And that sits outside the application site, but is relevant in terms of context. A couple of photos here. Members did carry out a site visit on Monday. Visibility wasn't quite as good as this, so you can see clearly, this is from the point where members met on site and looked across. You can see the existing woodland and the northern boundary, which is kept by the security fencing. This probably gives you an alternative context where winter months and there's less coverage from the trees. This second photo is towards the north, sorry, the west end of the application site. This is a redundant temporary structure that would be removed as a result. This is some of the area laid to grass and maintained that would be constructed over. I've just got there the site plan. You'll see that currently the perimeter road runs along the northern boundary of the site. This will be realigned to run along the southern edge of the buildings. As you can see, the buildings are made up of six various sized units. The floor plans indicate the different types and size of the units within each of, within each of the buildings. Building one, which is here, the colours on this plan don't indicate any specific use or anything, it's just to identify between the different building numbers. You'll notice these, the two central buildings, which, this is building two, and this is building three, I mean, in terms of their layout, they would probably be more suited to a B8 type use, whereas the smaller units and the layout of building one, building four and building five are more associated with a sort of a B1, B2. But they would all have a flexible use, so they could all be used for one or all of those uses at one time. So this is the elevations of the proposed building one. As you see, they are built for purpose, they fit the character and appearance of existing buildings on site. Just to note on this elevation, it's not completely clear, but the roofs, roofs here, the southern facing roofs do include solar panels, which will link in with the existing solar farm on the site in terms of power generation. You can note the existing, the proposed access service doors within this building and on the side elevations as well, down the bottom of the screen. This gives you an artist's impression of the building. You can see brickwork at low level, then silver cladding above, and then a darker cladding to cover the roofs. Again, building two, similar to building one, slightly different layout, and again, this is the one I referred to as maybe more suitable to a B8 type use, given the layout and style of building. And the same again for building three. All these buildings are approximately around eight, eight and a half metres in height. Again, building four, you can see the solar panels on the front, the service doors, again, the same materials used. And you'll see that again on building five. You can see here, at the western end of the site, there's a slightly sloping, you can see the building would be constructed into the bank slightly. And this is the smaller unit, building six, again, similar design, this is slightly lower level, single unit. As you'll be aware from looking in your agenda, the County Highway Authority has sought a contribution towards footpath improvements from three compass pub access, or compass gate access. Must apologize to members, when we met on site, I suggested that the footway would be on the left-hand side of the highway as you were leaving the site. It's actually on the right, so apologies for that, but this plan clearly demonstrates where the proposed improvement will be provided. Members are also keen to note how this affected the width of the existing carriageway. I can confirm, having discussed it and looked at this plan in detail, that it doesn't affect the width of the current highway, but it all takes place within highway land. So you'll see, it starts just after the access to the pub and the parking area where members met at the end of the site visit, carries along along Dunsfold Road, and you see it ends up at Allfold, crossways where there's an existing public footpath network which it will link into. So in terms of the determining issues in the scheme, I'll start on the principle. The site is located within the countryside beyond the green belt, in which development should be strictly controlled. However, the site does comprise previously developed land, which was confirmed by the Secretary of State decision, which dismissed proposals to redevelop the entire airfield for a new settlement back in 2008, and that is a material consideration. The proposal is considered to take part on part of the site which comprises previously developed land, part of that eighty-six per cent. And the application also sits alongside the existing commercial uses, which form one of the largest employment sites within the borough. Given the government's emphasis on development taking place on previously developed land, together with this absence to the harm of the countryside, officers consider the principle of development is considered to be acceptable in this location. In terms of the planning history, there's a lengthy history associated with this site. Members should notably take account of the temporary permissions, which are summarised on page forty-seven of the agenda. These comprise temporary permissions for B1, B2 and B8 uses, filming for TV and school and nursery uses. These temporary permissions expire in June 2018, where the use of the site would lawfully refer back to the use of the site for repair, maintenance and flight testing of aircraft associated with a permission granted in 1951. Whilst this scheme must be considered on its own merits, account must be given to the cumulative effect of the existing temporary permissions and the lawful permission post the 1st of June 2018, which is unrestricted. In terms of prematurity, given the stage of preparation of our local plan and the lack of any specific policies relating to this site at this stage, together with the scale of development, officers don't believe that this scheme would undermine the local plan process when assessed against the guidance for prematurity, which again is also set out on the bottom of page forty-seven of your agenda, and moves forward to page forty-eight. And that sets out the key tests within the National Planning Practice Guidance on Prematurity. The next point on here on matters of principle and technical opinion is the highways access and parking. Access to the site would be gained via the existing access points from Stovall's Hill and Compass Gates, sorry, Compass Gate. No alterations are proposed to these access points as existing. The highway impact of the development and the suitability of the local highway network has been considered in great detail, and the County Highway Authority has satisfied the additional vehicle movements associated with the development would not have a severe impact on highway safety or capacity of the highway network. The transport statement submitted with the application highlights the likely trip generation and the results of modelling of the increased traffic movements upon relevant junction capacity. Only when, just as a sort of background, only when junction capacity exceeds eighty-five per cent of its capacity would the county council look to raise concern with a scheme or seek improvement or mitigation to the highway or the specific junction. The transport statement highlights that the impact of the existing and proposed traffic movements are at its highest during the PM peak at Stovall's Hill and Dunsfold Road junction, and this suggests that a junction would be operating at around thirty per cent of its current capacity. It is also noted that improvements to Stovall's Hill and the Dunsfold Road junction have been made to the surfacing of the road, which the county council wanted to assure members of. In terms of the compass bridge access and the road via that, which links to Dunsfold Road as well, subject to a contribution to secure the new footway, which I detailed in the presentation, which is to be delivered by the County Highway Authority, there's no objection on a highway safety and capacity point of this junction. Members will be aware that there's an existing cap upon movements to and from the airfield, which allows for two thousand seven hundred and twenty-three daily movements per day. As you will have noted within the agenda, at page fifty-four, a proportionate increase to the cap is considered appropriate, and given the absence of any highway safety concern. You will note, at the time of drafting the report, we haven't finalised a figure yet, so it was set out that this was recommended, but you will see an update to your report, which sets out the rationale behind this and officer's view and a recommended condition. So the proportionate increase of cap would be to allow six hundred and twenty-five additional daily movements. This has been agreed with officers and the County Highway Authority with the applicant. Therefore, adding that to the current cap, this would allow for three thousand three hundred and forty-eight daily movements a day, which results in a twenty-three per cent increase in vehicle movements over and above the existing cap. These, of course, are combined across Stovall's Hill and Compass Gate access points. So the rationale for this is to consider the existing number of movements of two-seven-two-three trips a day against the existing fifty thousand square metres of floor space, which is at Dunsfold, which equates to five point seven trips per hundred square metres of floor space. We've taken that figure, and the applicants have also put forward that some of the existing commercial units are large storage uses, which haven't got a significant number of employees, and therefore, given the units proposed, a fifteen per cent uplift should be made on that. Again, that has been accepted by the County Highway Authority, and officers are recommending that that be accepted. So on that basis, applying the five point seven trips per hundred square metres to the nine thousand nine hundred and sixty-six proposed, with the fifty per cent, that ultimately finishes up where we get to the six hundred and twenty-five additional movements. Clarification's also been sought regarding maximum HGV movements. The applicant's analysis suggests that a maximum of eighty of the six hundred and twenty-five additional trips could be from HGVs. However, they have put a caveat in that, and they believe that a number of additional movements will be more like forty, given the likely occupiers associated with the scheme, which I'll discuss in a little more detail in a minute. So on that basis, we recommend that the cap be lifted, increased, and over page on your update, on page two, there is a revised condition, which is worded as the previous condition was, with the exception of the higher daily trip movement added. So that's our position on highways, and as I say, just to reiterate, there's no objection in capacity and safety issues from the Highway Authority. They accept the increase in cap is a proportionate increase based on the additional floor space, and therefore, there's no objection on highway safety grounds. In terms of the parking provision, the applicants suggest, sorry, the application proposes two hundred and sixty-nine parking spaces. Whilst this does fall below the council's parking guidelines, if all, say, all the units were to be in use for B1 and B2 purposes only, the actual under-provision is not likely to result in any harm to the character of the area or highway safety, because it could be accommodated elsewhere on the airfield. As such, this level of provision is considered on balance with the proposed flexible uses to be acceptable. The employment need is another matter that we've looked at closely and tried to seek as much information from the applicants as possible about the need and the likely occupiers to understand why they're now bringing forward this scheme. The applicant suggests that approximately two hundred jobs will be created from the proposed business units, which is a material consideration that weighs in favour of the proposal. The applicants have also provided The applicants have also provided information on a confidential basis of companies interested in letting the proposed units, stating that have pre-let eighty-six per cent of the floor space, subject to permission, being granted, and from the information that officers have seen, this includes a mix of B1, B2 and B8 uses, although the percentage mix for each of the interested occupiers has not been provided, so that's a matter to take into account. Members may wish to consider this confidential information which is provided as annexed to the agenda, and I will leave it to the chairman to decide on this matter whether this information needs to be discussed later in the meeting. In terms of the site location and sustainability, the airfield is considered to be isolated and has limited access to public transport. This is a matter that does weigh against the scheme. Improvement is to be made to pedestrian access from the Allfold Village End and the Compass Bridge End as a result of the contribution to the County Council to complete works for a new footway. Therefore, on balance, it's considered that the site's location would not outweigh the benefits of the scheme, providing employment on previously developed land within the established employment site within the borough. Travel plan will also be secured by condition to encourage occupiers to employ sustainable means of transport where possible. Just move on to flood risk and drainage. The site is within flood zone one, so it is in an area of low risk of flooding. In terms of drainage matters, officers recommend that this, given the characteristics of the area, can be dealt with by condition, and conditions seven and eight deal with the foul and surface water, or the details of the foul and surface water drainage details to be submitted. Given the former and current use of the site, contamination is highlighted as an issue. The application is supported by a contamination report that suggests that no contamination present in this part of the airfield. This has been agreed, the conclusions agreed by our environmental health officers, and informative is added to require that the applicants advise the council if any previously unidentified contamination is found at a later date. In terms of the wider impact, the site sits adjacent to the area of great landscape value and with the Surrey Hills area of outstanding natural beauty beyond. Given that the site forms part of the established airfield and associated hangar and be sit alongside associated hangar buildings, it would be positioned close to the mature woodland that was shown on the photos, and it would be largely screened from long distance views, therefore, it's our officer's view that it would not harm the wider views of the AOMB from the AOMB and the setting of the area of great landscape value. The visual amenities, we looked at the design of the scheme, and they comprise modern business premises and would be finished in suitable materials. The design reflects the proposed function of the building, and there is a scale that is in keeping with the buildings on site as existing. The last point I'll move to is the impact on residential amenity. In the proximity of the proposed buildings from the surrounding residential properties would mean that the scale and use of the building would not result in harm to the amenity of residential properties within the vicinity. However, the increase in vehicle movements should be considered and the impact upon those properties. It's considered the additional six hundred and twenty-five movements would not have a detrimental impact on residential amenity over and above the existing situation. And to add to that, condition twelve that's within the agenda also restricts the number of night time HGV movements to that imposed by the appeal inspector considering the temporary uses on the site, and that's imposed as a permanent condition under this application. So I'll move back to your update sheet. There is two recommendations, a revised recommendation A, which is that subject to the completion of a section one oh six agreement to secure a contribution towards delivery of a new footway between Allfold Village and Compass Bridge access, and subject to conditions one to fifteen and informatives one to six as set out on pages sixty-five and seventy of the officer's report, plus revised condition sixteen, which is set out in the update, that permission be granted. There is a revised recommendation that if the legal agreement to secure the contribution towards the delivery of the footpath has not been completed by the ninth of December twenty fifteen, that the application be refused for the reasons set out on your update sheet. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Peter. And this item is subject to speaking. I understand the procedure has been explained to you. So first, may I introduce the objector, Chris Britton, to speak.
Madam Chairman, members of the committee, speaking on behalf of myself and other local residents, I want to explain why this hugely significant development at Dunstfold Park will, if it's allowed to proceed, severely impact the quality of life of all those living near the current accesses to the site, as well as place intolerable strain and risk on roads in neighbouring parishes. However, before I get into my main speech, I would like to just point out that this update was only made aware to us on arrival this evening, and despite the fact that I was talking with the case officer just yesterday afternoon to see clarification about caps and vehicle flows, I had no indication of this coming. I'd just leave it with you to consider that we had no chance to consider this, and it goes without saying that we would completely reject any increase in caps suggested by these conditions. The scale and nature of the proposal is not, as the applicants portray it, simply a redevelopment of existing or previously developed land. Demolition only involves one existing building on the site, and that represents just three per cent of the site area. The rest is fifty per cent grass and forty-seven per cent car parking and hard standing, as you have seen. The development marks a thirteen times increase in the buildings on this designated site, and taken as a whole over Dunstfold Park, that's a twenty per cent increase in industrial floor space. This is an enormous development, the most immediate and obvious impact of which will be to increase the traffic generated. The transport statement only dealt with peak hour flows. Existing planning restrictions, as you now know, on Dunstfold Park are based on total daily traffic and night time HGV movements. Therefore, those are the parameters that members should be considering. The proposal comprises some twenty-five units, all of which will generate significant HGV movements, in addition to two hundred and sixty-nine cars using new car parking spaces. Taken together, I'd estimated, even before seeing these figures, six hundred to a thousand additional traffic movements to and from Dunstfold Park daily. That will undoubtedly cause the site to exceed the current cap of just two thousand seven hundred and twenty-three movements per day, and given that the applicants have stated that main access to the site will be via Stovold's Hill, this traffic will be encouraged to use a road already designated as unsuitable for HGVs with blind bends, a summit and subject to frequent flooding. Safety is already a concern for the many schoolchildren, horse riders, walkers and pet owners who have to use both Dunstfold Road and Stovold's Hill without any protection against fast-moving heavy vehicles. Despite the applicant's recognition of this increase in traffic, they've made no proposals to improve access to the site. At a public exhibition that they themselves held in July, Dunstfold Park confirmed that a new access to the A281 was a prerequisite of their wider plans, which would go hand-in-hand with greater restrictions or even closure of the existing accesses to HGVs, and the local press this week quoted the applicant's hope for these plans to be submitted shortly. Surely, logically, these two applications should be taken together and a common new access solution found. Therefore, the timing of this application in relation to Dunstfold Park's other plans, and surely before the new Waverley local plan is due to be published, is both irresponsible and illogical. Granting of this permanent application will prejudice the outcome of ongoing discussions about the long-term sustainable use of Dunstfold Park, because it risks creating imbalance towards greater industrial use. It's premature without the provision of necessary transport infrastructure to support large-scale development. We're more pleased that the Highway Authority has supported most of these arguments, and indeed, its primary response recommended refusal on the grounds that it would result in the park exceeding the cavern vehicular movements. What's happened since then is anybody's guess. Regarding night time HGV movements, it appears that no regular monitoring currently takes place, and residents are reporting more frequent movements by a very large forty-tonne artix, oil tankers and buses in particular using Stovold's Hill. The section one oh six funding for the provision of a footway at Dunstfold Road were not unwelcome would be just a sticking plaster that does nothing to solve the source of the problem and provides no relief to Stovold's Hill. Why not use the section one oh six powers to obtain funding towards a new access road and junction with the A281? In summary, I suggest that the council cannot accept this application in the absence of sustainable proposals for dealing with the traffic impacts. The proposed conditions do not solve the problem, and in fact, raising the cap will completely make the problems worse and are inconsistent with current planning. I therefore urge refusal as the only option. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Britton. Now, may I introduce the representative from Allfold Parish Council, Adrian Erica, please. Thank you. Mr Erica, I didn't remind Mr Britton, but you do have four minutes from when you start speaking, and we would ask that you stay within that time. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the council. On behalf of Allfold Parish Council and in the absence of our chairman, I submit the following representations. First, the officer's report in the public reports pack contains two significant inaccuracies as follows. In the county highways' response, starting on page twenty-nine, at the top of page thirty, the wording amended response received sixteenth to the tenth two thousand and fifteen should read additional response received sixteenth to the tenth two thousand and fifteen. On the same page, the sentence that starts in this regard, should the council that permission be granted, should be correctly reworded as in this regard, whilst your comments do not alter my formal recommendation, should the council consider that permission be granted? It is essential that these two errors are corrected, as they substantially alter the context of the county highways' response. Allfold Parish Council has previously stated its support for the development of Dunstfold Park for appropriate business use. However, it is considered that B8 storage and distribution is not an appropriate business use and is unsustainable for this site in this location with its present access points. This application represents an increase of twenty per cent on the current floor space, which could potentially be one hundred per cent B8 usage. Any increased B8 usage will result in an increase of the commercial and HGV vehicle movements to and from the site. This is an application for the permanent planning permission for a small part of the site in isolation, and does not take into account the fact that planning permissions for the rest of the site are temporary and expire in two thousand and eighteen, and that no master plan has yet been submitted for the site. It would therefore be premature to grant a permission for this application. B1 and B2 uses, such as research and development, would bring more and higher value employment opportunities to the site, as opposed to storage and distribution activities associated with B8 use, where activities would demand fewer people, more space and more commercial and HGV traffic. The site has currently two access points, one via Stovold's Hill, the other via the compass gate from the Dunstfold Road at Allfold Crossways. In the transport statement, it is mentioned that Stovold's Hill is intended to become the main access to the site. Stovold's Hill is an unclassified road scheduled as unsuitable for HGVs. To now declare that the road is suitable for HGVs would go against all previous findings and result in the junction being rebuilt for HGV access. As far as the Dunstfold Road access is concerned, Allfold Parish Council has supported petitions of local residents that Dunstfold Road should be designated as unsuitable for HGVs. Dunstfold Park recently submitted a request for screening opinion for the development of a new access road from the existing A281 onto Dunstfold area drone, and it is in the public domain that the applicant intends to include direct access to the A281 in its application for residential development. We note there is no provision for a new access road in this application, therefore it should be refused on the basis of inadequate access, making it unsustainable in transport terms. Contrary to the officer's report, pages thirty to forty, it should be noted that none of the parish council's concerns have been addressed in any way. Allfold Parish Council cannot see how the officer's recommendation to grant permission for this application can stand. Given concerns from the parishes and local residents, Surrey County Highways' recommendation to refuse the application should prevail. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Erica. And now may I introduce the supporter, Gerry Forrester, please. Good evening, Mr Forrester. You also have four minutes from when you start speaking.
Thank you very much. I'm sure that Dunstfold Park will already be well-known to many of you, perhaps with the location of BBC Top Gear, perhaps as the location for Cranly Freight, or of Surrey Hills removals. It may be that it's known to you for the technology companies that we have, AFC Energy or ReBio Energy, or just as the location for the Jigsaw School or the Little Harriers Nursery. In fact, Dunstfold Park is now the home to a wide range of businesses, many of them owned and managed locally, and collectively they now provide employment for some seven hundred people. I'm pleased to be able to report that Dunstfold Park is now almost fully occupied, and that it has been for some time. However, the businesses continue to flourish, and a number of them now have immediate requirements to expand into new and modern premises, in order that they can support their businesses and they can develop over the coming years. In addition, Dunstfold Park has recently been selected by a new technology company as their preferred location for a new design and development facility. Dunstfold Park is now a highly attractive location for businesses to locate and to grow. Some of you may recall the closure of British Aerospace on the site in nineteen ninety-nine, and the impact that occurred then on the local economy with the loss of one thousand jobs. However, Dunstfold Park has once again become an important employment site within the borough, generating some sixty million pounds each year into the local economy. The application before you tonight is to provide six new buildings which have been designed to accommodate the growing needs of local businesses and to secure their future within the borough. The officer's report clearly sets out some of the strong policy support for this application, such as the use on an existing employment site and also the use of previously developed land. However, I'd like to just touch on two points. Firstly, traffic, and I know that there will be some debate on traffic and access this evening. And with that in mind, I'd just like to draw to your attention the summary which is set out at the bottom of page fifty-five of the officer's report. It's already been mentioned to you, but I would like to repeat it. Overall, the increase in vehicle movements associated with the proposed floor space would not have a significant impact upon the capacity of the highway network or highway safety as confirmed by the Highway Authority. That would seem to be an important consideration for the committee. Secondly, economic growth. I have only been able to provide you with just a snapshot of the range of businesses that are already established at Dunstfold Park, and to provide you with a brief outline of their need to grow and to expand. The need for new premises now is vital in order to secure their future here within the borough and within the local economy. You will, of course, be aware that the planning process now has an important function in nurturing and developing economic growth. And with that in mind, I would just like to draw to your attention page forty-five of the officer's report, which outlines just at the bottom, significant weight should be placed on the need to support economic growth through the planning system. Again, that would seem to be an important consideration for the committee. In conclusion, I would therefore just ask the committee to support the officer's recommendation and to approve this application. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr Forrester. Right, members, now over to you. councillor Ellis.
Sorry, Chairman, to jump in quickly, but Mr Cleveland did offer the opportunity, I think, of us having some confidential information, and I realise that this may be horribly inconvenient to everyone, but relating to the pre-letting of the proposed accommodation, I have to say I'm very, very concerned about the future prospects for the small businesses currently on the Hewitts Industrial Estate in Cranly, that was until very recently in the same ownership as the applicant. So if it's not too inconvenient, and hoping that perhaps other people might be interested as well, could I ask that we receive or we can see this confidential information so that I could at least be aware of the type of businesses that are seeking to take up this accommodation, and we have been told that eighty-one per cent of it has been pre-let? Thank you.
Can we comment on that, officers, do we?
So thank you, members. Yes, I mean, it is available. It was circulated to members by committee services with the agenda, following the agenda. I have a copy of it with me, but I don't have a number of copies, and that is just the point. I may just turn to Fiona and ask the availability of that. Thank you, Chairman.
I believe, members, that I circulated it at the beginning of the week, Monday, by email. I think I copied officers' info. Do you recall getting it?
Councillor Foroshevsky.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I have received that information. I have seen it.
Chairman, if I can suggest it, if members do want to discuss it, then if you wish to take members' views on that, if they do wish to discuss it in exempt, we can arrange for the copies and then give members a few minutes. It's not very long, and we can give members a summary of it in that time and give them opportunity to discuss it if that is their wish. Thank you.
Is it members' wish that we should do that? We need to go into exempt if it's confidential? Can we have councillor Foroshevsky?
Chairman, I appreciate what's been said with regards to confidential information. I've certainly received it. I don't see it serves any purpose, so it's wasted more time now going back into confidential. And the applicant has been waiting for this to be determined for some time, and I think we should conclude this evening without any more interruptions or delays. I don't see that anything that I've read in confidential will change my opinion or alter the course of this debate this evening. I just think it proves that there is need and that the pre-lets are running up the eighty-six per cent that officers have stated. I wouldn't support going into confidential.
Thank you for that, councillor Foroshevsky. Peter, you wish to comment?
Thank you, Chairman. I think I would suggest that I will run through what's in that detail, but I won't obviously highlight which companies they are. I will just go through what the type of company is and the specific use that that relates to, if members are happy for that.
Just one moment, please. Councillor Byham.
Yeah, I'm just gonna say, I mean, I've got mine electronically with me. I don't know how many other members have seen it as opposed to have not, and if you haven't seen something which is in confidential, then it's always very disconcerting that you don't know what's going on, and I can understand clearly why Patricia is concerned about that. She's now got a copy to see. Perhaps we could have a show of hand to those who have seen it and therefore who are short. Because whilst the information is confidential, it's very simple information which we don't need to, I don't think, discuss.
Okay, well, councillor Ellis.
If I could just have just a couple of minutes to quickly skim through this, I won't ask everybody else to take part in any confidential discussion about it. Thank you.
All right, councillor Ellis, in the meantime, I think we need to be getting on with other comments from other members. So are we agreed then that this issue, as councillor Foroshevsky has put forward, does not have an immediate bearing on any decision that we might be able to come to this evening? Do we agree with that? Does anybody not agree with that, apart from councillor Ellis perhaps? Okay, so councillors, could we have questions or comments? Nobody has anything to... Ah, thank you.
Thank you. I had a number of comments to make. Firstly, I do note the Highways' comments in there, which was put in very similar observations to Oldfold, is that they were clearly suggesting refusals based on the potential to exceed the cap and the unsustainability of the transport location. Their amendments there, which were additional response, didn't change their views on the unsustainable transport location. I think that's quite important to me. The aspect of employment, it's an interesting one. When the papers were originally submitted, they did have a zero employment on. We now have a single figure of two hundred, a single figure of two hundred rather than a range that's been included, and there's very little evidence in the document or the officer's report to back this up. The number must surely depend on the mix of usage and the additional space there. Certain sites would be occupied by people expanding internally, which will have a different mix. We've already sort of identified that two of the units will be distribution, and that's actually looked to be slightly more than perhaps I'd considered before when the officer went through the map there. So the employment numbers, I think it's important to actually have some form of sensitivity and range on it. The traffic concerns obviously is the thrust of the parish's input. The existing total of two seven two three was set to reflect a no-change position at the time it was originally generously, I think to some extent, set for this site. Although it's suggested that actual trips are approaching this level, there's no analysis of that movement between current employers, current visitors and current tarmac users. And I think that's quite important when looking at the increase. I do note the officer's comment on page sixty-four that reports that the proposal would not significantly increase the floor space over that of the existing. I don't quite know what significant is, but twenty-odd per cent sounds a lot to me. The updated conditions suggest that a further six hundred and twenty-five additional daily movements is proposed. It's a large increase, and this is really to reflect a very arbitrary prorata allocation of existing floor space to numbers. Again, I said earlier that basically that number includes lots of different types of visitors to that site, and really we should have something more scientifically based on actual employers on the site and employers' numbers. It's important. Then to take that concern over the base figure and then add fifteen per cent because it sounds like a good idea is a little stretched too far for me. It's suggested that would be a maximum of eighty HGV trips, but we cannot really be comforted by this because we don't really know what the base is. The reporting currently is the total number of trips, and there's no conditions in there particularly limiting the HGV movements except on overnight. Concerns have been expressed over the complete flexibility of usage between B eight and other categories. A large warehouse employer could considerably skew the employment and potentially the HGV There was a comment about the access routes and where traffic would be going. Great concern was expressed about the suggestion that the A three should be accessed at Milford. The obvious route for that would potentially be down Markwick Lane, which is really a very unsuitable road. Having read and reread the papers, I've got concerns. Yes, the site may be sustainable. Yes, it does contribute to congested road, but I ask myself what can be done to manage the current site, and I have some questions which are unanswered. The question I have as unanswered is, the mix and the use would seem to be much better served if there was some form of restriction as to the amount of B eight floor space that was actually, could actually be used under this permission, that there was some form of control over the number of HGV movements for the site, a better understanding of what was in the base and therefore a better understanding of how many more we needed as a result of this application. The traffic movement should be monitored by class of vehicle, as suggested, but also by gate so that we have some idea of where those vehicles are coming in and out. And I think the most important thing for me, having read through this and reread through this, the existing traffic limit should be retained. There's good sound reasons for setting this limit in the first place, and I think it's up to Dunstford Park to submit their plans to manage within these limits. If Dunstford Park wishes to increase those traffic movements, then they should submit suitable plans to mitigate the effect of that increased traffic. Without addressing these points or hearing other comments, then I'm not minded to support this application.
Thank you, councillor Gray. Councillor Goodrich.
Madam Chairman, clearly traffic is the matter that is causing the most concern, understandably, to the parish councils and to the objectors, and it's being suggested that the Highway Authority at the beginning of the report is objecting as well. But of course, reality is that now that further discussions have taken place and bearing in mind the update to the report, that having taken into account all the factors concerning the access points, the traffic movements, the capacity and so on, the road network in the immediate vicinity of the park, is such that the Highway Authority are now happy with or are not going to object to the extra six hundred and twenty-five trips per day. It seems to me, as much as one might wish to be difficult over the traffic, and I fully understand those living in the neighbourhood as to their feelings about the matter, that if we did, for example, refuse this matter for highway reasons, we'd be on a hiding to nothing if there was any appeal because the Highway Authority are saying, in effect, with the new proposal, they're saying no objection. And I think we've got to bear that seriously in mind.
Thank you for that. Any others... Oh, so sorry, councillor Band, I do beg pardon.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I would rather agree with the comments that councillor Goodrich has just made. In principle, I would be happy to see increased work being carried out, increased opportunities for employment on the Dunstford site, but the difficulty is always with traffic and the routing of the traffic. But as councillor Goodrich has pointed out, raising any formal planning objections on the basis of the traffic movements, now that they are apparently underwritten by the Highways Authority, sorry, the County Council of Highways, has cut the ground from underneath our feet completely, and I don't think we could sustain, sensibly sustain, a refusal on that basis. It is confusing, however. I mean, have they really withdrawn their statement that the additional transport means the transport is unsustainable, yet they approve the numbers? I mean, it seems to be a conflict. I mean, should they not be withdrawing their original statement completely? And now can they confirm that they consider the new highway numbers sustainable? The second thing is, I'm astonished that they feel that the condition of Stovold's Hill and the road to Dunstford from the Campus Bridge are, condition those roads as acceptable. Maybe theoretically they can cope with the traffic, but we're talking now about permanent planning permission. Are they really suggesting that those roads are in a state which can cope with this additional traffic for the long-term future without additional work? When you actually look at the roads, so you actually walk on the bits of the road we looked at in the site visit, which incidentally, officers, thank you very much for organising, I found it very helpful, there is considerable breakup of the roads, evidence of breakup of the roads. It seems to me that to make those roads, get those roads into a condition that is suitable for long-term use of additional heavy goods traffic, it requires a considerable investment on the path of Surrey County Council of Highways, and yet they've sought no contribution from the developer in this respect. I'm frankly astounded. It seems to me there could be reasons for saying we should actually defer determining this particular application and ask our officers to go back to the Highways Authority to clarify their position. Are they really, questions raised by some of the public speakers, are they really saying that this is unsustainable, but yet they're approving the traffic movements? Are they saying that they don't need any contribution to maintain the roads on Stovold's Hill and through Campus Bridge? Are they planning to clarify, are they planning to actually upgrade those roads in time for this application to take place? So I don't know whether others would feel the same way. I'm confused at the position that Highways have taken, but I recognise, as councillor Goodrich has done, that to actually object on the grounds of Highways at this point is unsustainable. So I don't know whether others would agree, we should be going back to Highways to seek some clarification and therefore defer this. I'll wait to see what others think. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Band. I understand that Peter wants to come in at that point.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I thought it would be useful just to clarify the position with the county council. So they originally objected to the scheme on the grounds of sustainability and transport sustainability, so access being available by a choice means of transport other than private car, so bus services, access on foot and access via cycle. What you'll be aware of is paragraph fourteen in the MPPF requires us to take a balanced approach. Transport sustainability is one matter that we have to consider, but the MPPF sets out a three-pronged approach to assessing sustainability, and it's not just about transport sustainability, it's about the social role, the economic role and the environmental role. And I hope that in my report I've set out that clearly the site's location is a matter that goes against the scheme, but on balance, taking account of that there's not a highway safety issue, the fact that it is an existing large employment site, and the fact that it takes place on previously developed land, on balance in terms of the sustainability of location in highway terms, that's outweighed by the matters that go in favour, the previously developed land, the employment provision and the fact that it's an existing established site. So that's the position with Surrey County Council. So they stand by their position on transport sustainability, that objection, but what they have done, we went back to them and set out our views that on balance, we think, you know, as you weigh up against the requirements that we were going to go in favour, they therefore, and we asked them to come back with conditions and any contributions that they saw fit to mitigate any harm, and they did that. And that was the additional response, and I accept the comment from the speaker, member of the public, that said it should be an additional response. It wasn't an amended response, it is an additional response to consider. Just one last point I'll pick up on, the maintenance point of the Highways, that is the requirement of Surrey County Council to maintain the public highway. We can't, we wouldn't be able to insist or request a contribution to maintain the public highway from Dunstford Park or the developer who are on that site. That is a responsibility of the Highway Authority. What we would suggest, if you would be happy, we will write as officers to the Surrey County Council, raise this issue and ask them to specifically address that under their responsibilities to maintain the public highway. Thank you, Chairman.
Chairman, could I just come back briefly? Could we as a condition request that they, insist that the County Council, Highways actually do put the road into a proper condition before the planning application is implemented?
Thank you, Chairman. I don't think, councillor Band, that would be reasonable because what you're trying to do is require the county council to do something through the planning application. The test for a condition is whether the development will be otherwise unacceptable without the condition. It would be desirable for the county to bring those works forward, and I think we can do, as Peter suggested, put some pressure on them to find out the timescale for the rectification of the quality of the roads. But unless they've actually come forward to say this development is not acceptable without those works being carried out, which they haven't, then I don't think such a condition would be reasonable because what it's suggesting is that the development couldn't go ahead unless those roads were repaired, which clearly isn't the case. I think that the other side to emphasise is, notwithstanding their concern about sustainability of location, they have recognised that the development must make its contribution towards improving the sustainability credentials of the site, and that's where the contribution to the footway and footway plan has come about. So whilst they have concerns, they have to ask themselves, but can this be satisfactorily mitigated? And that's the conclusion they've reached. So on balance, we have to go with accepting their position that whilst they do... So on balance, we have to go with accepting their position, that whilst they do have concerns about location, there's no highway safety objection, and we will put pressure on them to repair the road infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Councillor Forough.
Thank you, Chairman. I actually would like to congratulate the case officer for the report, because I think it's a very comprehensive report. It sets out very, very clearly, in a very pragmatic way, exactly all the issues that have been risen, and I think they've addressed them in detail in the report and has made it very, very clear. I would also like to say that a deferral is not a good option. This was supposed to be determined way back, I think, in June, where a lot of time has been spent talking to different organisations and so forth, to actually provide the report that you have before you today. So I see a deferral as just another exercise that will not achieve anything, because we've already had time to actually done that. And this evening is perhaps the time to determine this application. Our own policy, I have a little bit of confusion myself over this, our own policy CS10 does actually quite clearly state that Dunsfold Park is the biggest employment site in Waverley, and yet at the same time, it wants to cap its numbers by restrict, and therefore restricting its growth. So I do find that we're perhaps giving mixed messages as to, yes, improve the quality and yes, build more units, but at the same time, and you are the biggest employment site, but at the same time, we're going to cap growth by making sure that you don't have enough vehicle movements. Having said that, I think it's fabulous that we do have an update with an increased number. I think it's unusual that we find in Dunsfold Park, anywhere in the country, that it does have a cap on vehicle movements. But I do understand in this case, because of its rural nature, that it's necessary. But I do think, again, you've gone an awful long way to actually address that issue, so it's not excessive. I think when we look at it on the wider scale as well, what this has to offer us, it has to offer us a growth to our economy, jobs, 200 jobs is not for the faint-hearted. And I do believe this is a site that should be looked at, and I can only support the officer's recommendation, any more time wasting, it's just going to be a delay for people who want to get onto the site. And we cannot tell the Highways to start improving their roads, that's up to them, no more than we can tell Dunsfold Park how to run their business. So I think it's time to make a decision, and I fully support the officer's recommendation this evening. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Seaborn.
Thank you, Chairman. The importance of supporting commercial activities at Dunsfold Park as a major source of jobs and wealth generation in the borough seems clear to me, particularly noting the growth and demand for jobs that will result from the recent and anticipated approvals for housing development, both in Waverley and adjacent boroughs. The proposed new buildings and supporting on-site infrastructure in isolation seem reasonable and would smarten up Waverley's main employment site. As it stands, however, I don't believe that the application should be treated in isolation, neither do I believe that it adequately addresses the concerns raised by the adjacent parish councils. Each of these councils has identified broadly the same key issues, as councillor Gray pointed out. The application before us is part of a more complex plan, and yet we're presented only with the incremental consequences for transport of this application alone. Existing commercial activity at Dunsfold is governed by a temporary planning approvals. This application is clearly the first stage of a move to a site governed by permanent approvals. That seems absolutely reasonable, but to give approval, I would want to see the big picture, particularly related to the expected traffic types, volumes and intended routes that we can ultimately expect from the whole site in its final form. And as a consequence of the inadequacy of the local road network, the parishes want no increase in the amount of HGV traffic generated at the site. This desire relates to safety, air quality and general traffic flow. And yet through the application for flexibility in type of use, we're being asked to approve a plan which could see a significant increase in the quantity of Class B8 usage and a consequent increase in the use of HGVs. So I find it hard to agree with several of the conclusions in the officer's submissions. Firstly, at the end of the planning history section, it's suggested that we should be assessing the application on its individual planning merits, taking into account the cumulative effects with existing temporary permissions. This presumes that the applicants will not seek to change the configuration of the site when the temporary permissions expire, and that the extensions of those permissions or conversion to permanent permissions will be forthcoming. It would have been, if we'd been given a fully integrated plan for the entire site, then these presumptions would be less necessary. Secondly, the argument about prematurity ignores the forthcoming publication of Waverley's independent transport study. I can't see how it's possible to arrive at a fully informed conclusion about traffic when such a key piece of independent assessment is about to become available. And thirdly, the conclusion that the increase in vehicular movement will not have a significant impact on the capacity of the highway network, this is not an assertion that I can agree with, but even if it is correct, it's a consequence of breaking the application down into bite-sized chunks, and the very reason why we need to see the big development picture so that we can understand the big traffic picture and judge its sustainability. So whilst I believe that our interests to accept the proposal, sorry, whilst I believe that it is in our interests to accept the proposed development, I also consider it necessary, in order to satisfy widespread local concerns, that consideration is given to allowing any flexible, any individual building flexibility of using, but placing a cap on the total site B8 capacity so that the quantity of consequence HGV movements is restricted. Secondly, arriving at a specific ban, even if it has to be voluntary, on the use of HGVs on roads designated as unsuitable for HGV traffic, such as Salt Lane and Marwick Lane. And then thirdly, I think we ought to be awaiting the publication of Waverley's transport assessment before agreeing a total vehicle movement number. And to enforce the traffic aspects of the above, I personally would like to see a vehicle monitoring scheme for Dunsfold Park that provides significantly more granularity than the current gross monitoring of the 2,723 movements per day. I believe that it would be helpful to know alley movements, the direction of movements, whether they're inboard or outboard, and some sense of the general type of vehicle, and then have rights to individual, independent verification at regular intervals. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Are there any more comments? Oh, councillor Danus.
Thank you. Thank you for the information tonight and to the three speakers who have given their views. When reviewing these papers, I thought it would be useful to highlight some of the views of the consultations and parish council. The Highways Authority, and we've spoken a lot about that this evening, but on the 3rd of August stated the proposal should be refused. Virtually no local services, heavily reliant on travel, will exceed cap on vehicle movement, which is necessary to prevent operations on the site increasing beyond previous levels in an unsustainable transport location. This additional information on the 16th, in my view, doesn't sway from its transport and sustainability view, but mentions there should be financial contribution, travel plan, construction management plan and control of vehicle movement plan associated with this site. In relation to the footpath, this is welcomed and was supported by the parish council, but I believe no viability and safety audit study has taken place on this. Though a welcome addition, how would this deal with a large increase in vehicle movement, as it does not deal with the underlying issues that Dunsfold Road is not suitable for HGV traffic? I believe this will require third-party land, which I do not believe has been obtained, to achieve this footway greater width that need to be achieved. I have noted the additional update sheet, that legal agreement with the applicant has not been agreed to date. So this proposal, as we stand to date, would fail to mitigate the impact of the development on highway safety grounds. It fails to meet requirements of the MPPF 2012, policies M2, M14 of the Waverley Borough Local Plan 2002. I do not believe one footpath mitigates this in any way, shape or form. If you're looking at all the various parish councils who represent the views of the community, Dunsfold Parish Council have objected, Bramley Parish Council have objected, Haskins Parish Council objects, Busbridge objects, and Allfold have objected and given their views tonight. Now, we have mentioned about how big a new build this is, and this amounts to over 100,000 square feet, which is substantial. To say this is not substantial is inaccurate. The proposal of this magnitude has resulted in a net gain of six car parking spaces. In addition, it mentions having a cycle store for 40 cycles. I cannot imagine too many people wishing to cycle along the A281, Dunsfold Road or Stovall's Hill with the proposed rojus and the suitability of the roads. I certainly wouldn't. I do agree with Allfold Parish Council that B8 storage and distribution is not appropriate and is not sustainable with the current access points. Both Stovall's Hill and Dunsfold Road have a number of residential houses, and the impact of this additional potential HGV and vehicle increase cannot and should not be ignored. Dunsfold Road is in poor condition, and the verges and edges are breaking up. Travelling towards Dunsfold and towards the A3 Milford, the road is deteriorating even further, and can only be described as a mess. This can only deteriorate the road conditions even further. The officers have reported that the appropriate approach for the current application would, in the officer's view, on its individual planning merits, but taking into account the cumulative effect with existing temporary permissions. I have done this when I have come to my conclusions. I know, as my colleagues also do, we will always encourage new employment opportunities. I have read the confidential papers and the substantial report submitted today, and I cannot see any indication of this new employment, rather than potential relocation. The scheme hasn't proven to me that new jobs will be created, and I cannot see the benefits for the area when measured against the impact of this application. A note from recommendation 12 relates to monitoring HGV movements. The recent site visit, I understand, I understood that the monitoring equipment at each gate does not distinguish a car from an HGV, and condition 16, restricting daily vehicle movements. I reiterate the fact that we already have a set 2723, which has been identified as the maximum for the infrastructure that supports the site. I do not see that this condition reduces the impact on the local community with an increase of a further 625 movements. Having considered the views of my colleagues tonight, the members of the public who have spoken, Dunsfold Park into consideration, have come to the decision that the current application with two unsuitable access points, that I cannot support this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? So we, there are two recommendations, but, well, there are two recommendations. So recommendation A is that, subject to the completion of an S106 agreement to secure a contribution towards delivery of a new footway between Oldfold Village and the Compass Bridge access, and subject to conditions 1 to 15 and informatives 1 to 6 as set out on pages 65 to 70 of the officer's report, plus the revised condition 16 as set out on the update sheet, permission be granted. May I have those in favour of the recommendation to grant?
Six in favour of granting. Seven, sorry.
And those against?
Two against.
And those abstaining? I think councillor Henry, as you haven't been here for the whole of the debate, you can't vote on this one.
So that recommendation A is carried.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, members. So the recommendation to grant is agreed, and so now we must move on to the recommendation B, which is that if the legal agreement to secure a contribution towards the delivery of the footpath has not been completed by the 9th of December 2015, the application should be refused for the reason as set out on the update sheet. May I have those in favour of the recommendation to refuse on that basis?
I think that's everyone.
Thank you, members. The recommendation to refuse is agreed. Now we move on to the non-public speaking items. So this is item B1, WA20151509, land at Old Cottage, Wanbrulane, Cranley, GU67DS. We'll just wait a moment. Would you like to introduce the application to the committee, please?
This application relates to the provision of a new detached three-bedroom dwelling, together with two garage buildings, on land to the rear of Old Cottage, Wanbrulane and Cranley. Looking at the overhead, this is Wanbrulane, Old Cottage, which is a Grade II listed building, is here, and the proposed site is in the rear, to the rear. The proposed dwelling is designed to be in the style of a Surrey agricultural barn with a dominant roof form, and two projecting gables on the north-eastern and south-western elevations. The proposed building would have a maximum width of 18.2 metres and a depth of 11 metres, with a ridge height of 7.68 metres. Two double garages are proposed, one to serve the proposed dwelling, the other being the relocated garage to serve the existing property. The proposal seeks to share the same existing access onto Wanbrulane, with the driveway running along the south-eastern boundary. So if I go back to the, so at the moment, you have a garage here, that has obviously got to make way for the new access through here, so that has been relocated to this position. This is obviously the new garage to serve the proposed dwelling. The site currently comprises the garden area and the residential curtilage of Old Cottage, and as such, there is no material change of use of the land proposed. The site lies within the countryside beyond the Greenbelt, where the intrinsic character and beauty of the countryside shall be recognised. I'll go back to this slide. The developed area for Cranley is located on the southern side of Wanbrulane, so the development boundary is effectively along here. The provision of a new dwelling in the countryside beyond the Greenbelt is therefore considered to be a departure to the local plan, and hence why it's come to you today. It's further noted that planning permission has previously been refused for the subdivision of the existing curtilage to create a new plot and the creation of a adapted dwelling under reference WA20030641. The inspector at the time commented on the cramped form of development being out of character with the area. If I move you to the end of the slide, you'll see I've got a plan, that is, a block plan of the proposed dwelling at that time, you'll see that the scheme was actually immediately to the side of the existing cottage, and at the moment, we now have something to the back. So the current proposal is materially different to the previous refusal, as the appeal proposal sought to erect a dwelling to the side of the existing property, whereas now the proposal is to the rear with a more spacious setting. It's also material that since the appeal decision, the circumstances of the site have changed in terms of the redevelopment of the site to the rear. And again, if I go back to that one, you'll see, this is part of the Swallow Tals development, which obviously extends further to the west. Whilst appreciated that the site does lie beyond the developed area of Cranley, officers consider that the site is substantially surrounded by existing development, with the recent development of the Swallow Tals site to the rear. Accordingly, the proposal would not be considered to represent an isolated dwelling in the countryside, and furthermore, would be located in a relatively sustainable location, within walking distance of the village centre, schools, doctor's surgery, leisure facilities and the like. Officers are therefore of the view that the intrinsic character of the site has altered, and that the site no longer forms the edge of settlement location at the urban-rural transition. The proposal for an additional dwelling would contribute to the housing needs of the council, albeit in a very... albeit in a very small way. The existing property is a Grade II listed cottage, the significance of which lies in the cottage and its barn, which is here. Barn survival as an illustration of 17th century settlement type and farming practice. The site of the proposed dwelling forms part of the garden to the listed building, and therefore forms part of its setting and its significance. In accordance with the MPPF, local planning authorities must have special regard to the desirability of preserving the building or its setting. Officers have formed the view that the existing cottage is set within a very large plot, and that the building's sense of remoteness has already been slightly diminished by the development to the rear of the site. The provision of the proposed dwelling, designed to be in the style of a Surrey agricultural building, would, in your officer's opinion, preserve the setting of the listed building, and would not lead to the significance of the designated heritage asset being harmed or lost. Members are being asked to exercise their judgement as to whether they consider the proposal preserves the setting of the listed building. If members do not agree with officers and consider that the proposal is harmful, then they must consider whether that harm is substantial or less than substantial, and whether that harm is outweighed by other considerations. The proposed property is considered to retain a good sense of space around the building and between properties, and will be in an acceptable scale, having regard to the character of the surrounding development. Furthermore, given the separation distances to existing dwellings, the proposal would not result in a detrimental impact on residential amenity. For that reason, it is recommended that the application is granted with conditions as set out on pages 96 to 102 of the agenda. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Jo. Members, over to you. councillor Forachewski.
Thank you, Chairman. And again, can I deeply apologise? I did try and beckon earlier on when it came to declaring an interest, but you quickly moved on and I quickly brought my hand down, so I do apologise. I would like to declare a non-prejudicial interest in this application, as I am the chairman of Cranley Parish Council, and this application has come before us in recent months. So I would like to make that clear before I make any further comment. Thank you. Yes, basically now, again, I think the report is excellent, and given the new information, I'm satisfied now that the circumstances have changed, and there has been modifications to this application compared to the first. I'm minded now, on balance, to take a new and fresher look at this application and would offer it my support, given the changes in circumstances to, as we see up there, to the surrounding area where development has happened within the, not far from the curtilage of the property. So I'm satisfied now, given the changes in circumstances, I would support the officer's recommendation. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Are there any? Oh, sorry, councillor Ellis.
Thank you. I too would add my support to this application, and I strongly support it. In the past, there have been many applications relating to this site, but I think that this is one of those situations where the parish boundary, the settlement area, has expanded with the development as reported to us of the Swallowhurst site, and I think it would be perverse of us to actually refuse this application on those grounds. I think that the applicant, although I don't know them personally, is well-known as a good builder, a builder of quality buildings, and I think the design of this would be excellent, and I strongly support it. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Stennett.
Yes, I also am on the parish planning committee, so wish to also declare a non-prejudicial interest. I'm in support of this, no, sorry, I'm in support of this application, but can I just say that condition 6 on page 98, I think is probably going to be very important to the people that live in and around Wanborough Lane, that no trees are cut down, uprooted or removed. And if that is the case, if that is accepted, then I am quite happy to support this application. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Chairman, just to say that, we agree, that's why we're recommending its inclusion, and if there were any suggestion of any breach of that condition, we would take appropriate action. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Any other comments? So we move on then to the recommendation. And, subject to conditions 1 to 16 and informatives 1 to 5 as set out on pages 96 to 102 of the report, permission be granted. May I have those in favour of the recommendation to grant?
Is 12 in favour of granting?
Thank you, members. The recommendation to grant is agreed, so there are no items to consider in exempt session, so that concludes the meeting this evening. Thank you, members.